Seven o'clock? I'm flashing. I don't know who's on. Jude, Jerry?
Here.
Jude, hi Jude. Yeah, I'm here. Daryl, in the corner of your screen, you should be able to put up everybody.
Uh, no, I don't have a very big screen, to be honest.
No, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. It's Jerry.
We do have a quorum. Um, I don't see Al.
Got his picture?
There you go. Plus water? No, it's at work.
I remember Al. He used to come to meetings.
All right. Well, I hear my chimes in the background, so it must be seven o'clock.
Yes.
So, uh, I'd like to call the Village of Webster Board, uh, meeting January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to order, and, um, I will just say the pledge. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have a flag flying in the background. All right, uh, well, this evening we have a, um, special presentation prior to going through, uh, any, uh, public comment or to our scheduled agenda. Uh, I believe that we have, uh, Nicole Ryan with us, who, um, is from Freed, Maxick, and is going to, um, present to us, um, the summary for two thousand nineteen twenty.
Hello, everyone. It's so nice to see everyone. It's a shame that I can't see you in person. Um, I guess right now it's still safer that way. Thank you for, uh, still inviting me to the meeting. It is nice to see people once in a while. A lot of people put it off this year or said, well, we'll just see you next year. So, seeing that I haven't been to one of your meetings, it was great to be able to actually have a chance to introduce myself now that Laura is retired. Uh, but just to give you a little background, I have worked on the Village of Webster for a number of years. Uh, so you might not have seen me, but I've been involved. So, just to start off, I wanted to say thank you really to the village and to the employees, Marsha, Heather. Um, it's very hard to do a remote audit, and they made it happen. And it went probably as smooth as it could have, and we really appreciated all the effort that was put in.
Thank you, Nicole. We appreciate it.
After you said, I'll hop right to it. So, we conducted our audit under generally accepted auditing standards for the year ended May thirty-first, two thousand twenty. We were able to issue unmodified opinions over your governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, and aggregate non-major fund information. So that's a positive opinion, in case you don't know. Um, the terminology they use is a little distorted for some people, but, uh, really, it, it means that your financial statements are not materially misstated, which is the goal. This year, we did work with the village to implement GASB statement number eighty-four related to fiduciary activities. GASB is the standard, standard-setting board for governmental accounting. So they're the ones that basically dictate, uh, all of your accounting, uh, standards that your financial statements have to comply with for us to be considered generally accepted auditing. So, GASB statement eighty-four essentially changed the presentation of your fiduciary activity. Before, I'm sure you saw, the village had a trusted agency fund, which may still be recorded internally that way, but for financial statement purposes, it was changed to what they call custodial funds. And certain activity had to be reevaluated and pulled out of that fund. So they really tried to drill down on what was really fiduciary in nature and what wasn't. So where previously you had certain payroll activities that was held in there, uh, more of a timing difference before saying New York State pulled out retirement payments, little things like that, those items were reclassified and put into the actual fund. So, due to the amount, it was transferred, um, for financial purposes, it falls under your general fund at your end. But another example which you did have is bid deposits. That is more fiduciary in nature because it doesn't essentially belong to the village. So that was still maintained in your statement of fiduciary net position. The big difference there is that now we're required to show inflows and outflows related to that type of activity. So those are some of the differences that came about this year. Nothing too major, um, or overly difficult because you didn't have too much in the fiduciary activities, so pretty straightforward. Also, in May of two thousand twenty, GASB issued statement number ninety-five. They felt for everybody during the pandemic and decided to postpone a lot of the of the upcoming effective dates for certain statements. So, we were able to postpone, um, the biggest one that's up and coming is related to leases. That's postponed about eighteen months or so, so they'll push that off till two thousand twenty-three. That was really it as far as new standards, so everything else is pretty straightforward. I don't know if you have the financial statements with you, but I'm gonna kind of go through little pieces of it here.
Wish we did.
Let me see. Did you want me to try to share my screen?
Jude, we, um, we gave those to you, um, like two meetings ago. Marsha, wasn't it? We sent them a couple times. They're in your email, and then we, I printed them for you as well. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. Feel free to interrupt me at any time if you have any questions as well.
Oh, thank you.
I have it. Chuck, Carl.
Oh, do you want me to?
Perhaps, perhaps because there are some members of the public that are listening in, maybe you could share the screen so they can see the numbers?
Okay, and I'm gonna make you the presenter.
Hold on one second. Okay, are you able to see the PDF that I have up here?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, good. So what I initially just went over was our opinion report, which takes place right here. It states the opinions that we gave over the village's financial statements, the emphasis on matter related to the statement number eighty-four that I was just discussing. Beginning on page three, we have the statement of net position. So this is the start of what we call your government-wide financial statements. It includes the governmental and business-type activities of the village. The biggest difference that you'll see here compared to internal financial reporting is this includes capital assets and long-term liabilities of the, of the village. Your capital assets totaled approximately five point six million in governmental activities and one point five million in business-type activities. Your long-term liabilities, which you see down here, totaled about four point six five million in the governmental activities and two point five million in the business-type activities at your end. So the largest of these liabilities was the other post-employment benefit liability, which amounted to four point seven, uh, seven five million for the village as a whole. This liability is calculated based on the actuarial valuation that you obtained in accordance with statement number seventy-five. And one thing I'll caution you is because GASB requires you to include those liabilities of the potential future payments you might have to retirees related to health insurance and for subsidizing and, and things of that nature. They, they have a liability on here, but where there's a slight issue in the financial reporting, especially in New York State, is New York State doesn't allow for you to have any kind of funding mechanism. So it distorts these statements a little bit because there's no way for you to really show that you're saving any money or putting aside any. So the way I explain it usually to the boards is you wanna look at this number as, think of something that could potentially come down the road. Um, we understand you can't save, so we don't put a lot behind the number as far as criticizing you because if you look down here, it causes a deficit on these statements. So that's why when you look at your unrestricted net position, you see that there's a deficit of two point two million in the governmental activities and one point six million in the business-type activities. And that's primarily due to your other post-employment benefit liability that you're required to report on here. Does anybody have any question on those?
No.
So the net position is still positive?
That's similar to, the overall is, but as you see here, this, a thing called net investment and capital assets.
Yeah.
What it does is it breaks out the investment that you've made in your capital assets up here. So you can see, have a better presentation almost of what's considered the unrestricted portion. This is essentially the income statement associated with the government-wide statements. I won't go into that too much. I think this is gonna be more of what you would be interested in, and that's your balance sheet that starts on page five. These are your fund basis financial statements, and these are reported similarly to your internal financial reporting. So this is where you're gonna see your fund balances and the related activity. So I'll start with the general fund. Your total fund balance at the end of the year was one point seven million. Four hundred and eighty-four thousand of that is considered non-spendable, and that relates to the amount that's owed to the general fund from the sewer fund. They set that aside basically to show that because you've already loaned that to the sewer fund, you don't have it available to you. That leaves three hundred and seventy-one thousand in restricted fund balance, which is satisfied for your capital reserve and your debt service. Twenty-five thousand in assigned fund balance for encumbrances. And that leaves eight hundred and forty-five thousand in, on assigned fund balance. I'm gonna just drop down to the next schedule, which is similar to your, what they would call an income statement. And you can see here that your current year revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund by a hun, about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Just some small notes, we noted that the sales tax revenues were down about a hundred and twelve thousand from the previous year or seven and a half percent. And also gross utilities receipts were down about thirty-five thousand or twenty-eight percent, which given the pandemic isn't overly surprising, you know, based on what we've seen. Actually, some of the sales tax numbers wound up being a lot better than we expected, um, going into the end of the year for the villages. Really quick, um, I'm not gonna skip there right now, but towards the back of your financial statements, there's a schedule called your budgetary comparison schedule. And what it does is it takes the general fund's revenues and expenditure information here, and it compares to, it to your final budgeted numbers. When looking at that schedule, your actual expenditures in the general fund remained under the total budgeted appropriations by four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Are there any questions on the general fund?
No.
Okay. There's this other col, column here called non-major governmental funds, and that consists of your capital projects fund, which didn't have any activity in it for this year, and your parks and recreation fund. The parks and rec fund had a hundred and fifty thousand in restricted fund balance at the end of the year, and there was an increase of about twenty-nine thousand, um, in the overall, uh, fund balance. So your revenues exceeded your, I don't believe you had any expenditures in there. So it was, it primarily consisted of an increase of twenty-nine thousand. For statements in accordance with GASB, your sewer fund is, goes through certain adjustments to be converted to a presentation that's more of a business format, similar to the government-wide financial statements that I explained earlier. So your sewer fund here presents capital assets as well as the long-term liabilities that I mentioned. So I'll go through this briefly, and then I'm gonna jump over and give you what your sewer fund really ended up like if you were looking at it based on your internal financial reporting. So the sewer fund had a deficit net position of one million dollars at the end of the year with the unrestricted of one point six million, like I mentioned earlier. The, there was an operating loss of fifty-five thousand versus, um, an operating loss last year of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So you saw a lot of improvement there. Probably, uh, a large part of that was due to, uh, the rate adjustments that was made for the sewer fund. Also, your overall net position change, uh, down here is, was ninety-three thousand. And just one thing to note, because of the placement, um, of the special assessment revenues, that's why you see the, the difference that's occurring there. It's just the wa, the way it gets grouped into non-operating versus operating.
So Nicole, in other words, then, uh, we should be looking at, even though it's showing an operating loss, that's, it's showing as a loss because it does not include the special assessment, like the sewer charges that are included on the tax bills, right?
Right, in, in this presentation, that part is not included. But really briefly, I don't have it shown here. Um, yeah, I can't really pull it up too quickly, but I will go over some basic numbers. So if I were to pull out your capital assets and pull out your long-term liabilities here, so similar to what Marsha would print off for you from the office, your sewer fund ended with a deficit fund balance of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars at the end of the year. But the revenues did exceed the expenditures by two hundred and two thousand. And again, that was largely due to the rate increase when I did a comparison of current year to prior year numbers. The biggest difference that I saw on the expenditure side from current year to prior year related to certain equipment purchases that were made last year for about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that were not reported this year. So that's ultimately, we're required to report this way for GASB purposes. But internally, when you're preparing to do your upcoming budget, the other numbers that I just mentioned are what you really would wanna focus on. The other, really, I just wanna show you two, um, and this goes across the board because it pulls out those accruals and adjustments for the most part, is the, the cash flow of the sewer fund. So as you can see here, when you look at your cash flow for the different categories, you basically had an overall net decrease in cash of about twelve thousand dollars. And really, I would say the biggest concern for the sewer fund, which I know you're well aware of, has to do with the four hundred and eighty-four thousand that's owed to the general fund. Now, I know, um, what can you do with that, did you say? So you have a couple options. Um, depending on the, the status of the general fund, you could do a one-time write-off where you basically do a transfer and say, you know what? We're gonna start fresh and worry about maintaining the sewer fund from here on out and help it to stand on its own. Uh, your other option is to basically create a repayment schedule from the sewer fund to the general fund. If you do that and you're going to do it over a period of a number of years, you need to make sure you, uh, calculate and include interest in, in that manner because of the nature of the, it's similar to like treating it like a loan. Is it the general fund loaned the sewer that money?
But legally, we could, um,
Right it does.
And so, that, that is, that is allowed. I have, I have seen other places do that. I've never seen anybody get a slap on the wrist for that. Um, you do want your, your business-type activities to be able to stand on their own. But I do think a, a large part of that is when the sewer fund was established or reestablished a couple of years ago, that piece of it didn't really come along with it. So, I'm sure that was a large part of it, and Marsha and I had a good conversation about that, um, last week. And I think that, you know, you can see here in your fund balance for the general fund, if you take this four hundred and eighty-four thousand out, essentially this down here is what you would have left. So if you did a one-time accounting entry that would transfer and it would write off that, that amount owed, these three numbers down here are what you would have left, the restricted, assigned, and the unassigned.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Anybody have any other questions on that?
It's good to know.
No, just wanted to make sure it was legal.
Yeah. I mean, I cannot give a legal opinion. So, I, you know, you're, that, that's one thing I have to caution you. That's just from my experiences and what I've seen in the past.
That was something that Laura had said to us previously, some time ago. And, Don, can you weigh in on that?
I, I, I cannot give you an opinion as to whether it's legal or not because I've never encountered it before. It's not a, something that happens too often, I suppose. We could write to the controller's office, their attorneys, you know, their, their legal staff and ask for their opinion.
I like that, yeah. I believe Marsha has already done that, so.
Yeah, I talked to someone yesterday. He is, what I learned from him was that, um, generally speaking, um, a village is, and I mean, maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know this yet, but, um, village is considered to be, um, like, there's the same tax base for the general fund and the sewer fund. So in, in terms of, you know, being fair to the taxpayers, that is not an issue. For the, so I don't have, uh, he was not sure of the legality of it or the correct procedure or whatever. He wanted to, um, consult with a few of his colleagues, but that is definitely in the works, and I think it's looking pretty solid.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much, Marsha.
Yep.
You're welcome.
That's, that's good news.
Yeah.
Very good.
So if there's no other questions on the financials, I'll switch over to the report to the board.
Nice to meet you, Nicole.
It's nice to meet you too. So in this report, we have a section called required communications. And in this section, it basically summarizes our responsibilities to you regarding the audit. It'll go over the arrangements, the timing. It'll reiterate any adoption of new standards that, that came into play this year. Sort of gives you just an overview and a summary of how, of different pieces of it. Um,
Nicole, I just need to interrupt you for one second. I apologize.
No, no, no problem.
This is my first time. I think before I had made someone, um, just gave someone um, ac, access to show their screen, I hadn't made them the host. Um, I don't know if there's another way to do that, but I think I might need to switch back in case we get any questions, because I think you're getting them, not me now, if we get any people, any from the audience or anything. So I just need, I was hoping I could try if there's another way to just make sure we're better, but not host.
Sure.
Okay, let me just try. I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anybody.
Not a problem at all.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, does it still let you, um, share your, your screen? It looks like it is.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. So then, the next part of this report sort of summarizes for you the significant accounting estimates that went into certain calculations that go into your financials. And it summarizes the policy, the basis of the estimate that was used to determine the, the numbers, and then the conclusion as far as the estimate. On page five, we have what we call the summary of recorded audit adjustments. So, you know, I, I caution you to not get too hung up on these. These are essentially the adjustments that were identified during the audit after we were provided the initial numbers, uh, that required the, the adjustment was required based on the materiality. So had these adjustments not been made, they could have potentially materially misstated your financials. Now, I do honestly believe that a number of these, so like for instance, number three, that was strictly based on the implementation. So we see that across the board, uh, usually with, there's, there's very few municipalities that have a CPA on board that would have the, um, significant training to be able to, to do some of these entries on their own. And I do believe a number of the entries, given more experience for Marsha, I don't think we're gonna see them going forward. On page six are the recently issued accounting standards. So these are the ones that we pulled out that we thought really could more potentially have an impact on the village. I would say just read through them, see if they sound familiar to you, something that could be, uh, something we need to discuss in the future. You see the implementation dates are until twenty-three and twenty-two, so we do have a couple of years to, to try to work that in. Um, eighty-nine really only comes into play if you have, um, construction somewhat in progress. Eighty-seven is the big one that we'll, we'll have to discuss going forward. Um, and then ninety-seven is the most recent, so we usually put that out there for informational purposes so that you're aware of it and see if there's any applicability. That one is pertaining to four fifty-seven different compensation plans. And then this is the section that more commonly, um, is, is what the board wants to hear about, both the good, bad, and the ugly. So, um, this is our communication of material weaknesses. So there's different levels of deficiencies that you could have. You could have a material weakness, significant deficiencies, control deficiencies, or sometimes operational matters that will provide you based on what we see. So in this letter, we've provided you, I believe there were three material weaknesses that we thought required further attention. And the first one relates to the adjustments that I mentioned previously. Because of their material nature, we're essentially required to put this finding in there for you. So that's, that's strictly, um, related to that previous page of the audit adjustments. So, that's, that's strictly, um, related to that previous page of the audit adjustments. The internal control activities. Marcia and I had a great discussion on a lot of these. It sounds like a, a lot of processes and procedures are in the works as far as improvements in this area pertaining to generalities, payroll, bank rec, budget to actual reporting. Um, really, when there's transition, we tend to find this, uh... We tend to have this finding more often because there's, there's that, that timing difference. Um, people still learning the ropes. So, i- it's not uncommon that controls kind of fall through the cracks a little bit more at that point. But now that things are getting up and running, um, and smoother by the day, I'm sure. Plus, you throw a pandemic in there and that doesn't help by any means for anybody's control processes. So, we're having internal controls as a, quite a common finding these days because people are working everywhere trying to get by. So, that was the second... Yes, sir.
I have a question. Uh, would that be something that, um, on a monthly basis, the reporting or the activity come across my desk where I would review that? Is that something that would, um, take care of that particular problem or at least help? Uh, it's something that was done a number of years ago and, um, has not been done in recent years. So, um, is that something that, uh, would help in this area?
Yes, it, it is. It is usually one of the more common ways to alleviate some of these. The main goal here is really to establish the controls to help mitigate the risk, right? You don't want to have, um, the higher the risk of errors, um, misstatements in, in the financial reporting, the harder it is for you to be able to do your job and, and really have good fiscal responsibility over the village. So, that's, that's probably the biggest concern next to the obvious legal concerns that you would have. So, I think that establishing those processes, like you mentioned, um, and making sure that we can see that those processes are occurring. Sometimes we get a lot of, oh, yeah, I do that. I, I glance at it every now and then. But it's really making it a more formalized process that helps to ensure that things don't fall through the cracks. Any other questions on those? And then the last one pertains to the sewer fund deficit, which we, we covered pretty significantly already, so I won't go into too much detail. Um, I think once you make the decision as far as the, the amount that's owed, uh, the, really, the next piece is just, which you've already started the process by increasing the rates last year. It's really kind of doing that long-range financial planning for the sewer fund. Um, and I know there's been some determinations that are trying to be made there and, and what's gonna be best for the village overall. So, I think that, that's really, that's really the critical piece to help alleviate that, that issue in that fund. And finally, in this report is Exhibit B, which just consists of the representation letter that is signed between management, um, and our firm. Are there any other questions, concerns?
Um, Nicole, I, I would, um, ask this question. If the, um, if the village were interested in establishing a, um, reserve in the sewer so that in the future, um, if it were to build that reserve up so that it could meet some of the expenditures or necessary, um, expenditures that may come up during the year, um, is it possible for us to establish, um, a fund in a sewer rate that would be set aside in order to accomplish that? To build a, um, I don't know if I want to call it a reserve, but to build, uh, that capital that would then be able to be invested when that bill came up? In other words, right now, we're kind of lying by the seat of our pants. I mean, what we look for is what we intend to spend. And that's what we're looking to, you know, to, to, uh, be able to do is to build a reserve so that those unexpected expenses that come up can be met without going into deep debt. Because they will come up.
Understood. You're exactly right. And I think once you get back to, say, the black area, then you can really start to consider, um, establishing, uh, equipment replacement thoughts and different things of that nature. Um, really, your, your, your best, really, your only way to build it into your budget per se is from a contingency standpoint and trying to reduce spending compared to maybe what you had initially budgeted. I mean, it's, it's really trying to... That's where that long-range planning... And obviously, right now, the way things are, it makes it that much more difficult to do your long-range planning because we really don't know from day to day what's going to happen. So, I would say, as you go into your budget time, um, I wouldn't, until you make the determination on what you're gonna do about what's owed to the general fund and getting the fund balance in the sewer fund back to zero to start with, then allowing the rates... Because you did have a net income this year. So, had you been in a good place to start with, you would have ended okay. But to be able to build on that, I just caution you as far as legally reserving that money in that fund. So, it may be more of just a terminology that you're using. Um, you can very well, if the board established legal reserves, you have that capability, but there are other mechanisms under, um, the governmental accounting standards that you can use to set money aside within the sewer fund for future purchases as well. So, there are other options there that we could definitely discuss, um, going forward once you've kind of established where, where you're on an upward trend, which I think last year's rate increases definitely helped. We saw that in the numbers. Um, and hopefully going forward, you'll continue to see that. Does that answer your question?
Um, yes. I mean, I, I guess I'm considering the fact that in terms of establishing a rate for the new budget, um, and what it is we're going to be charging, um... Can, and that's my question. In terms of the, the rate that we would charge, could that include setting reserves? Or does that have to be a rate that we look at our budget and that rate that we set, we think that's what's going to cover our budget? And if we can come in under that, then that goes into the reserve? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
In other words, if technically a hundred and, a hundred and seventy dollars would make all ends meet in terms of collection and, you know, uh, treatment and all of that and all that goes into our sewer budget. And we charged a hundred and eighty dollars so that we were charging in excess of what we thought was necessary for that year so that we were actually planning on building a reserve of some kind. Is that allowable?
I can send Marcia the criteria that you have as far as contingency for when you're building your budget. Because there's specific criteria that OSC puts out that, that says that you cannot exceed, um, some of them I think are like ten percent of your total appropriations or certain things like that. So, I don't have the specifics right in front of me, but let me get that information together for you and I can forward something along to Marcia. So, at least you have that in the back of your mind when you're going into budget season here.
Nicole, can I have a quick question? Um, sorry. So, I just want to clarify because I, I, I got a little confused. Um, when, I know what Daryl's trying to say. You know, you want to make repairs or whatever, but, um...
Sure.
So that we can have some kind of, um, just, you know, nest egg or something. But is, is the word reserve not, is that incorrect? Because reserve, you can only be used for certain things.
Exactly. And that's why I said I caution you.
I wanted to make sure that wasn't, everybody wasn't confused.
Right. I caution you when you say reserve because reserve is illegal. In, in New York State, if you set up an actual reserve, once the money goes into that reserve, there's certain, only certain ways that you can get that money out. And it goes out basically ninety percent of the time. It has to come out for that purpose. There's only a few exclusions that New York State gives you in certain cases depending on the type of reserve you set up. So, I think that's what you're referring to, Heather.
Yeah.
Not like saving account, okay.
So, Daryl, so...
Right, right.
So, Daryl, what Nicole's saying is, you know, your, your so-called rainy day fund that's gonna pay for a repair you didn't anticipate or whatever, that's, that's generally your unallocated or unrestricted fund balance. The problem in the sewer fund is, is there's a negative approximately three hundred thousand dollar fund balance. So, you need to, you need to chip away at that, but you can't... But in New York State, you can, you know, you can only, you have to have zero-based budgets. You can only collect what you expect to spend in that fiscal year. You can't collect extra to just set aside. That's not fair to the taxpayers or the ratepayers. So, to the extent you cut expenditures and so what you budgeted for expenses ends up less than what your revenues are, well, now you're slowly gonna erase that three hundred thousand dollars. But, but other than having a line item in the budget for contingency, which the village used to have and it still may have in the general fund, you know, you could put one of those in the sewer fund, too, but there's restrictions on the amount that you can budget for contingency.
Okay, so like we put ten thousand in there. You put eight in general, two thousand in sewer. So, there's a limit on what you can put in there? And usually, we use some of it for things, but do you know what the limit is?
I have that information.
Okay.
I have that information. I can send something to you. We've been, historically at least, we've been including a contingency amount in each fund, but it's not... I'm, I would be shocked to learn that it was anywhere near the limit.
Um, and then Mayor Byer...
And I, while we're on the subject of fund balance, I do want to reiterate that, uh, Jake has given me some, uh, historical information. I'm doing enough research to be able to determine approximately how much fund balance should have moved over to the sewer fund with the rest of the sewer numbers. Um, and hopefully, we can, we can help the sewer fund to look a little better without, um, hobbling the general fund. So, stay tuned for an update on that.
And then, um, Mayor Byer, I apologize. I just, um, I know it's not public forum, but, um, we did have a cou- a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, is it okay if I read it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we had a, just a resident want to know, can the sewer fund have a positive fund balance?
Yes, for that purpose of future equipment or... Usually, you want to maintain some sort of fund balance. It's similar to having a savings account. Um, you know, you, you, you do have expenses that come down the road, especially when you're dealing with sewer water situations, infrastructure. Um, costs can add up really fast when there's emergency situations. So, usually, that's where you wanna, want to eventually build on that when, when you're able to a little bit. Um, within, and that's within reason.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question, I think we already answered, is just how does the village establish a contingency? And I told him that we have one. Um, we're just figuring out what we, how much we can put in. So, I think that was the only question. Thank you.
I just, if I...
Includes mine. Sorry, just...
Yeah, I have a question if I can about the, with the fund balances. I'm sure it's similar to the general fund where if you have an unassigned fund balance, that's got to be kept within reason. That's, that's basically you underspent or your, your expenses didn't, didn't, uh... Uh, or your, excuse me, your revenues were more than your expenses, so that goes into the fund balance. Uh, they would assume and prefer you have reserves. But again, like you said, those reserve accounts are only for specific purposes and can only be spent for what you established a reserve for. I believe I, I've heard about before, but I don't know in sewer funds and these type of, uh, or budgets or, or operations, can you have a rate stabilization fund as a reserve? Uh, are those type of reserves able to be set up? Or is that, uh, do they have to be capital reserves and things like that?
Usually, there's a, there's a whole slew of different types of reserves that, um, general municipal law has out there. It's which ones are applicable to villages versus other types of municipalities. So, probably where you've heard of a stabilization reserve is with taxes, tax stabilization. And there's a lot of criteria that goes into those, but that, that would not be specific in this case.
Yeah, you'd have to look at, it's, it's a tax stabilization fund. And I think legally, a sewer rent is not considered a tax. It's a user fee. So, I don't believe there's such an animal as a, as a, um, you know, rent stabilization fund. So, I don't think you could do that one, Jake, but, you know, we could check.
Sounds good.
One other option, um, that you can do... It's, it's, there's some, there's some differences between a sewer fund that's sort of more of a business-type activity. Um, because you maintain your, your sewer fund internally, more like what they call a special revenue fund, there is capabilities internally to do different types of savings of fund balance, referred to as assignments or commitments. Um, in order to do those, you would really need to, um, and this is under GANBY, so it's not a New York State, uh, law that it's more for financial reporting purposes. Um, but to have the capability to do those things, be it in the general fund or wherever else, you'd have to establish a, a GANBY fifty-four policy, which Marcia and I talked about, uh, briefly. Um, that, that is potentially another option. It gives you a little bit more flexibility, um, for when you kind of want to set those aside. Now, I would caution you, though, the, the nature of the way the, the sewer fund is held in your financial statements, it would still get rolled up into the unrestricted portion of that, uh, that net position on there. But for internal purposes, you may have a little bit more flexibility there without legally establishing a separate reserve.
Okay. But you'll get that kind of information to, um, us?
Yep, yep, I can get to both of those.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Is there anything else I can help with tonight?
Uh, I don't have any further questions myself, but I do, it'll be passed on to you in the near future.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're very welcome. I hope you all have a good evening. It was nice meeting everybody. Marcia, good to see you.
Thanks, Nicole.
If, if anything does come up after the fact, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, at this particular point, then, um, I would move to, uh, public comment if there's anybody who has, uh, called in or has sent in a question. We'll entertain that at the moment. And if you would like to speak, you may email the Village Clerk, Heather, anything that's come to you?
No.
Okay. Then at this point, I would, uh, close public comment. Uh, I will leave it so that if you get anything, Heather, you might bring it up later. And we'll move to the scheduled agenda for this evening. And that would, for one, that, uh, we're looking for a resolution to approve minutes from the December twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty meeting. Anybody have any, uh, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-second.
I'll make it. I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Uh, if you have a copy of those, I hope, and, uh, have, or have taken the opportunity to look through. And does anyone have questions that they would like to, uh, bring up regarding, uh, claims and warrants?
Um, what was the, I found the, um, the sewer H one? Um, first, the E Y W companies, what was that emergency thing? Jake, do you know?
Yeah, you know what's funny? I just did the P O for that the other day and I said, oh, this was different. I'm gonna have to remember this because there's gonna be a question about it. And it was from me.
Sorry.
It, it was a, it was a compressor. That's what, it was a compressor issue with the compressor running. And the compressor is obviously we, uh, well, not obviously maybe, but we use, uh, there's air pumps uh, that pump the sludge into the digesters and that's probably a compressor that runs those. So there's a diaphragm type pump that's used and it takes air. So that's what it was compressor. I knew if I talked long enough, it would come to me.
Oh, good. Yeah, because that was, you know, the sludge too, that's another three thousand. Yeah. And, oh, um, Labella, what, I, I understand the speedies permit and what they were doing for us. What did we request on the other two? The one for thirty-seven hundred and one for fourteen?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
I think that those go back, don't they, to July and then, uh, through?
August? That's the end of August, thirty-seven hundred. But I don't know exactly what it consists of. And then the fourteen hundred is December. So is that also part of the speedies thing or, I mean, how much?
It would, it would make sense that December's the speedies and August would be, don't, remember, they were part of the preparation for the virtual meeting to the public of both the town and the village.
Yeah, I, I think all this, it was in that thirty-five, that one that's listed speedies because remember, that was a not to exceed number on the.
Yeah.
So I think the others, um, like it, August, and then there was a gap, August, I think August is September because that, the dates kinda confused me. I remember looking that up, August is September, it was already paid last time. And then, so it's like three years, it was older and then one that's current.
Okay.
September through December, actually, so.
Yep, and I did go back, July one was not done already. So this is one that's over.
Okay, so that's.
They had that gap in there.
Thank you.
Great. And I can add, some of the work that they've done relates to the, um, possibility of joining with the town. All that research, some is the speedies permit and some is the, the wells.
Yes.
Doing the prep to shut that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I saw that. Which is the earlier ones.
Got a question, Jake, on the door. The alliance door, the overhead door, what happened to that?
It's the one that was down. I'd have to double check. That was when I was out. Um, but I believe that was the one down at the salt storage that, um, as you can imagine, it's very difficult to keep a metal door on a salt storage. And, um, that's one we always have trouble with.
It doesn't specify whether it was down there or not. That's why it was.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, I'll mark that down and email. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that's what it said is it was the, uh, salt storage, but that was Alliance.
Okay. Um, what's the bill for a thousand dollars for a passenger side mirror from Henderson Ford?
That is on our two of this medium or mid-sized dump trucks there, the seven fifties. Um, the first one we got, the plow wing, everything was wonderful. The second one, the wing seems to come up because the box was a little different. We got an all seasons box. There was a different, uh, alignment of the oil tank and the post, uh, for the, uh, wing. That wing comes up and it does not seem, it seems to, they have just a little bit of a give where it can meet the mirror. Um, that was coupled with the problem that when you're moved, the operator was moving it up, it moves at a normal rate or it doesn't go. Then it all of a sudden went really fast and would take out the mirror. And the mirrors were a thousand. We just sent that down to tentco and I'm waiting to call back to Sincon. Um, it was the one that actually, you know, contracted when we built that truck, um, because they made a modification. There was a relief valve that was sticking, um, or a check valve that was sticking, rather. And so the hydraulics weren't flowing, I mean, weren't owning, and then they flowed all at once, which made the wing come up really fast and take out the mirror. So, um, I told them we were paying for. So, yeah, it's, it's kinda crazy, but, um, I'm, I'm trying to get them beat up a little bit because, you know, it's, it wasn't really an operator issue. It was, uh, the hydraulics, you know, weren't moving it and then they moved it really fast and smacked the mirror. Nope, hydraulics.
Um, one other, uh, other question I have is, um, on the sewer flushing, the emergency repair for eighteen hundred, what was the emergency repair for, Jake?
Uh, sewer flush truck, there was a hole in the, uh, the one it was, there was a parasitic draw and it would be dead all the time. And there was issues with the batteries and with the cables that were up in there from my understanding. And this was one that went out when I was out, but, uh, the battery cables, they go up inside, you know, inside the, uh, harness, you know, wiring harness. There's issues with, that needed to be taken care of. But then there was also a issue with the elbow because of the, uh, abrasiveness of sucking up the rocks and dirt and debris and, um, well, I guess I'll stop there with my description, but things that are in sewers. Um, the elbow gets worn out and they had to make a repair to that as well.
Sounds like my arm.
Hopefully that same material.
How often is that truck out, Jake? Do you have an idea?
Um, you know, you know, all, every day in the summer, just about. I mean, we go through, putting lines all summer long. Um, you know, in the winter, when it's frozen, uh, real cold temperatures, we try to limit and it just goes out in emergencies. Uh, but it's down at the plant all the time, you know, in the influent structure where there's a little bit of an idiot drops off solids. Uh, they use it to, uh, clean out the irrigation basins at the end of, end of each primary tank. Um, so I, I would, you know, I would say, you know, it's in use. Eventually say nearly every day, but I'm sure there's, you know, a day or two a week that it could sit, but, um, again, it could get called out twenty, you know, twenty-four seven too. So, um, and typically if we, if, if we need it called out in an emergency, then here's, uh, we want to drive fast there. There's a real issue, so.
Thanks, Jake.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? It was hard to hear.
Jerry.
Oh, okay.
Pay attention.
Yes, sure known by the deep voice. Hey, you sound kinda similar. Okay. Uh, Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, financial statements for those mailed. Heather?
Aye.
The financial statement. Is that what I saw in terms of what was part of the email for sewer?
Um, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. They're just the budget to actual, I think I, it was time for me to give you one. I usually give you one a month. I don't think we got, you got one in December. I'm not sure. But yes, I emailed that out.
Yes.
We don't have to approve.
I see it.
No, no.
To, uh, budget modifications.
Yes, no approval for financial statements, but we do for.
Aye.
We don't need approval for financial statements, but yes, for the budget modification.
Uh, in terms of budget mod, uh, we have a sewer fund, uh, budget modification. And it comes from, um, GG dot eighty-one twenty dot forty-four six grouting. Uh, that would be thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And that will be moved to a number of accounts. Uh, GG thirteen twenty-five four oh eight, computer assistance and hardware, to, uh, GG nineteen eleven four hundred, workers comp, GG eighty-one thirty four sixteen, janitorial services, GG eighty-one thirty four fifty-six, instrumentation maintenance, and finally, uh, GG eighty-one thirty forty sixty, uh, to engineering and professional services. And those amounts are aggregate to thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. So can I have motion to approve the sewer budget modification?
I'll make them.
Should be on your last page, too.
I'll second it.
Wasn't there.
Okay. Uh, Trustee Ippolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Sorry, got off there a little bit. Okay. Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Uh, Don, do you have any, uh, thing for us specifically this evening?
All quiet on the legal front.
That's good. Heather?
Yes, I do have one thing. Um, so with COVID, um, just to give you a little brief like background, um, the state and federal, um, there were laws passed to provide, um, basically COVID time where if someone is, um, forced to, um, quarantine, then they were given an upwards, I think, um, up to two weeks. Um, the laws were very vague though in terms of, um, and I apologize, Don, I didn't mention this to you yet, so just wanted to get this on your radar. Um, the laws were written very vague when you asked from NICOM's opinion and they're not sure if the federal and state, they each, they each said that you can get two weeks, but they didn't say if it was really stacked. So, um, something that I just wanted to get you to think about is that many of the boards, uh, other village boards have established their own policy, which we need to do this anyway. Um, Jake, myself and, um, Marsha need to get together and, um, just with everyone being out, it hasn't happened yet, but we need to establish what's gonna happen if this happens again. If, if it continues to happen, you know, we need to establish something specifically for that emergency, not a general emergency, COVID specific. Um, but just to get this in your head now, because the numbers could keep climbing, who knows, hopefully not with the, but the board may want to think about establishing its own, um, if they wanna extend or offer more sick time, like the Village of Pittsburgh, I think, offered four weeks, um, just because now you can stipule, you can specify that if someone is quarantined by law, like I learned that you get a very, um, very not nice note from county. Um, that you can be, uh, removed by force, which was interesting anyway. Um, but a lot of the boards have decided that it's not to punish people if they legally can't leave, um, leave their house. Now, upwards after that two weeks. So in addition to, the boards can decide to do that. Um, and, because the, uh, COVID sick time ended at the end of the year. So if it wasn't, I believe, even we're still, still kinda figuring that out, if you, if you didn't use it, I, you can't use it anymore. So in case something happens again, we may wanna think about establishing our own policy in terms of offering a, a police time.
Yep.
Good idea.
Yep.
So I can work with Don on that. Um, I have, Marsha has done some, like, when I was, when I was quarantined, I asked Marsha to do some legwork for me. And she emailed the, um, NICOM and also, did you, I think you emailed O S C too, didn't you, Marsha? There, we had, we had, we had copies of the law and I can send that out, but.
Yeah. I, I don't think I reached out to anybody. I just tracked down the specific laws. No, I did. I've had to check my notes.
Yeah, you did. You talked to NICOM and I have the emails and the laws.
Okay.
We wanna think about that.
All right.
Cause right now the time is up and if people, now it's, I had talked to Jake, um, Jake, come back. I had talked to Jake about it. Um, it's a little bit different if, um, essential workers, obviously, um, if they're not displaying symptoms, they can go to work. And I've also asked Jerry about that. Um, you know, what their policy is. We don't have one right now, so we may want to establish one anyway. Um, if you're not displaying symptoms, then, you know, go to work or whatever. But if you're not, this isn't, this is that, when you are displaying symptoms, it's kinda for those people that if, or if you test positive.
Yeah, that was a stipulation when we had everybody out, um, was, you know, when we, we had a positive case and everybody had to be, have a negative to return back, even under the quarantine because of the exposure, was a negative test and be asymptomatic, then you could return, uh, you're still, you remain under quarantine outside of work as an essential employee. You can come back and work and then just stay quarantined. Um, so got you out of doing dishes at home basically, but you can still go into work.
And then I think, did it, did they tell you that it superseded that rule, like the contact tracers, that if they were displaying symptoms, then you absolutely had to stay home, even if you're essential? Okay.
Yeah, that's what we asked about, hey, this is the plan we're gonna take, is that we're telling everybody to get a test, uh, they can come back and through, and they remain asymptomatic. And that was, they said you're doing exactly what you should do.
But you can stay, you can be positive, but asymptomatic and come to work.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you pass positive, you stay home for the, for the quarantine period.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we might wanna put it on the next agenda. I can, like I said, I can work with you on that, Don.
Yeah.
Joe and I just talked about it and with Marsha as well. And, um, if this comes up, we, we wanna have a policy in place.
Yeah, good idea.
And that's all I had.
Um, would you, uh, wanna check with the other nine villages and see if they have a policy since this has elapsed for everybody?
Yes, I will do that because we hadn't reached out to them. We talked initially when everybody was, this was just happening. So yes, I will find out what they've done since then, because a lot has changed. Um, rules have changed and so I'll find that out, no problem.
Uh, DPW?
Yeah, just got a couple of things. Um, uh, the ready project of the Sandbar well decommissioning is moving along. Um, the submittals, we're looking to see as early as the next meeting, um, if we can get, uh, approval or have it prepared, so get to the board and have approval to go out to bid, uh, for that work. Um, there's some question now, they're gonna circle back around, we had our weekly meeting, uh, they were gonna circle back around with some of the engineers and the folks at D C discuss it, cause the projects were linked together, um, seeing if they. discuss it because the projects were linked together, um seeing if they can do individual uh approval. Uh what we don't want to do is tripping over each other. It's obviously a very uh small piece of land down there. Um we don't want to be tripping over each other with multiple projects. So if we can get approval and get this one done ahead of time, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
Uh part of that Sandbar Well too is we're looking at um staging areas, easements and things like that that might be necessary and having a discussion, obviously goes around when we get done, uh we have a liability down there now and um with those wells and luckily we're gonna get, we got funding to, you know, it's about ninety-five um to get that taken care of. Um but we're also gonna have to uh consider the disposition of the property when we're done. I was talking to Don about it. Um he said, you know, that's gonna start with a, uh make sure we get a good appraisal of the property. We have one from like seven years ago or more, uh but I think, you know, something that we just had to be updated. But I've reached out to three different appraisal companies um to try to get uh an appraisal done um on those, on those parcels. There's five wellhouses and actually, you know, putting all the stuff together for the, for the appraisal companies to come up with the uh um quote for me, actually discovered there's seven parcels down there. There's the five little tiny ones for the wellhouses, they're like fifteen by seventeen. Then we have two actually smaller ones that are six by six foot parcels, so.
Where?
Uh they're the, the rock wells that are nearby, the regular wells. Uh we knew that the, you know, the rock wells are in there, but there's actually two other little parcels that are in there, so. And I don't know, when, when we did Railroad Street, I, I'm sure it was probably a lot simpler for the appraisal of Railroad Street, um but it was, that was, I think, four hundred and fifty dollars. Um what I'd like to do if I can, and I probably should have asked Don earlier, but I just was thinking about this, because we don't have another meeting for a bit, you know, a couple of weeks, if I can get a company going on it, is it possible to get authorization for, say, up to a thousand dollars for, and, and authorization for me to sign a contract with the lowest bidder, providing they don't exceed a thousand, uh which I suspect hopefully, you know, coming lower than that. Um but to do the appraisals, all the parcels are this, you know, they're essentially the same, they have the same history, um they're about the same size, the exception of those two tiny ones. Um so I can't imagine, you know, you kind of do one and they should be all about the same, so. Um if that is okay and it's, if it's proper, um be great because I keep the ball rolling on that and keep everything moving, if I get authorization to sign a contract with the lowest bidder or lowest proposal, providing it doesn't exceed a thousand dollars to do the appraisal of the seven parcels down at the Sandbar.
Um the uh original cost of those, at least five uh buildings or the land in which we purchased or whatever, uh wasn't that about five thousand dollars each?
You know, it, it was what the result was seven years ago. Then I look back and in the, in that uh appraisal that was done, they actually stated uh acquisition costs of, one of them was a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, uh one was six hundred dollars and one, or somewhere two thousand, I believe, so they varied, um because some were bought in groups, so they kind of allocated a, two thousand dollars, two lots or three, you know, two big lots, big being fifteen foot by seventeen foot. Um those lots, uh you know, and then, and then the one small one, they might have said, okay, here's, these two are, you know, whatever, uh eight hundred dollars a piece and the other one with four hundred bucks, you know? Um if maybe, if it was two thousand for all of them, so I guess, long story short, I don't know. I don't see, you know, when they do deeds, the deeds just say a dollar, you know, they always seem to say, um it'd be a lot easier if everything didn't cost a dollar, because then we'd know what it really costs, but there's a reason for it, I'm sure, when they do, so.
What, what was paid, it was so long ago, it's almost irrelevant as to the value of the properties today, what was paid for them. Bottom line is, is if whatever they're worth today, you know, the village can't just give away the land. If it has any value, you know, it's gotta get paid for, but I guess my question, Jake, when, when all is said and done, after the, the, the wells are decommissioned, does that include taking down the wellhouses?
Yes.
So it'll, they'll just be vacant parcels?
Vacant parcels.
Something, I don't know what cap or there'll be something where the well was, I guess, I'm just thinking on it, but.
That'd be below grade, but yes, they'll be there.
Alright, so, so, so what's the, what's the timeline to get, to have the project completed?
Uh we're hoping, you know, April, May, beginning of May.
Alright, so, but this shouldn't be that complicated. It should take an appraiser, I don't know, three weeks to do an appraisal?
Frankly, the last that was done took these.
See, because, because they're gonna have to, you know, to do the appraisal, they gotta, they gotta look at the site. And now if they go down there, they're gonna see a wellhouse. Well, what's it gonna look like? Is vacant land? You know, normally they photograph it, that's all part of the appraisal.
Oh, right.
You know, so I, I, I'm not sure you can get the appraisal done at least until the work's done, and it shouldn't take that long.
Okay.
You know, and frankly, there, there's only one buyer, you know, it, they're only worth something to the mayors, right? And if they need them, you know, the village can work out a license agreement with them, you know, you can park cars on it, you can, you know, even before they title it.
Yeah, talk about that.
You know, just to help them out during the voting season or whatever. We can work out an interim agreement with them, so they have use of the parcels. And then when we figure out what they're worth, I think they're pretty reasonable. We can probably, we'll work out a, you know, what the sale's gonna be. You know, I can't imagine they're gonna be worth that much, but.
Right.
You know, especially, they're worth more to the mayors than to anybody else, you know, so it's like two different numbers. You know, because who's gonna buy a fifteen by seventeen foot landlocked parcel that you can't do anything with? Because it doesn't meet any, any kind of zoning for, with the, with the town down there.
How much has been accepted? Or how much would it cost, does it cost us, the village, even with this ready grant, to decommission them? I don't know. I mean, if it costs ten thousand dollars and you give this thing away for five hundred dollars, then I don't know if it makes sense.
Um why does it? We've got about two hundred and thirty thousand dollar liability that we're able to get out from under for ten thousand dollars. Um we have, you know, and, and, and we do have, for nothing, we do have the need um potentially for a temporary easement for access, be able to complete this work and get out from under that liability. So that may be something that comes into play when we're discussing, hey, can we have an easement? I think if we have something else once, they might uh logically ask us, you know, for something that we have, so I don't know if the value can be, you know, in kind or things like that too, so it might be something, obviously, we gotta, we gotta figure out the value of it uh first, you know, one, one time or another. Um and see, you know, I think everybody has the same interest, but we have, you know, obviously a responsibility to our bears to make sure that if it's worth a nickel, we get a nickel for it. If it's worth five hundred, we get a nickel for it. Um but and also to be fair to people that have been, you know, frankly, great neighbors to us for the last thirty years, um and, and worked around five little bumps in their operation all this time, so, you know.
And I agree with Jake, whatever, whatever the village has to pay out of cost to, to rid itself of this liability, because it is a liability at this point. You can't pass that cost on to the, to the buyers if, if it has no relation to the value of the land, because what's the village gonna do with these parcels? The village doesn't want them because it's an ongoing liability, just for if somebody slips and falls on them or whatever, you know, you get, you gotta get rid of them. And so it, whatever they're worth, they're worth, but I don't think you can tie the, the value into what the village had to spend to remediate.
To remediate, yeah.
The sites, you know, it's no different than, you know, if it was a brown field or whatever and, and you know, and you had to remediate uh whatever kind of environmental damage was done to the property. That doesn't mean the property's worth whatever it costs you to remediate it. It's, you know, it is what it is, when, when it's all said and done, is the value. So at some point, the village has to get an appraisal. I'm not so sure we need to start doing it now because the wellhouses are still there and it might give a false sense as to what they're worth, but. And I don't think it's gonna take very long for an appraiser, you know, to appraise them when all is said and done. And my guess is it's, they're gonna come back with very little value.
Good answer.
Who, me or Don?
Oh.
So, so I would, I would suggest as, as we um, as the project gets moving along.
We're a little long-winded compared to you, Jake.
Yeah, well, as, as the project gets moving along, at that point, you know, do an authorization to spend not more than X dollars for an appraisal and, you know? So we'll try to, try to coordinate getting the final appraisal as soon as possible when the work's all done.
Okay.
I know.
Sounds good.
Remember that when mayors came to see us at that one meeting that we had?
Yep.
And they, they said they'd be willing to pay twelve hundred dollars for each.
Yeah.
Each one? So do we need an appraiser then? Why don't we just sell it to them for that?
Well, what, what if they come back and they're worth two thousand dollars each?
Ah, I knew you'd say that, Don. See, we don't know. We, you can, you know, the, the problem is the village, you know, you, you, because of that constitutional prohibition against gifting things to individuals. You know, if it's worth two grand, but you're gonna sell it to them for twelve hundred, you've made them an eight hundred dollar gift and that's, you can't do that, so.
Okay.
We, we have to have an independent idea, opinion as to what they're worth.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, anything else?
I got one for Jake.
Yes, sir.
How long is that dump truck staying on Main Street, right in front of uh the old law office?
Well, it was doing some work there, um and it was there for quite a while. I understand that they received a ticket over the weekend and then it was off. Um when I drove by when I left, it was out there, every night it's been off. When I left work, it was about five o'clock or so, um and it was still there, um but I don't know if it, they've since moved it or, or not. I understand the person that typically drives it lives pretty close by too, so they might have come back again, and so I, I just, I don't know if it's there still or not, but if it is, uh I'm assuming it'll, you know, there's no parking two to six um in the village, so it's certainly has a potential to get a ticket and if there's a lot of snow, it uh it would take a big tow truck, but uh I'm sure they could move it if need be, but we don't ever want to get, um easier people follow the program, I guess.
Yeah, I was in there yesterday with Will and talking to, one of the Fico brothers was in there, so I, you know, I was talking to them and they got a, they've got a huge amount of it done.
What do they do?
Because they can't, um, well, they're tearing up the whole inside out, literally. And there's no place to put a truck. There's no way to get into the back or anything. The only place they can do is the truck's gotta be there. So, yeah, and that's difficult. And I was talking to them about that and they said, no, we're trying to move it. We know it's difficult. You know, but, you know, they don't always, they're.
Right, if they move it after, after their, after hours, then there's really not a problem. I understand they gotta do the buildup. And I had a few people uh mention this, no way to prove it, that they believe that they've gotten flat tires and it's due to that, in, right in that intersection or that dumpster, so I don't, I know when you do construction, if you miss the dumpster, but who knows, I don't know if you can really.
Oh, I don't see how you could, but yeah.
No, that, and that's one thing that I know Will's talked to him about, they've, they've, they're gonna be, they're very careful in policing that, um because it would, because it's right on Main Street, they're, and they're sweeping it up and constantly, yeah, keeping a look, keeping a watch for that, they said, so hopefully that that's not, uh, that's not pressing.
Jake, can you, can you say anything to the uh state or whatever around the, you're turning off of two fifty, left heading to our, our home? There is a pothole that's like been there a while, that people catch it and ask it.
Here's another part, we're getting at the crosswalk.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You're turning left off of two fifty, heading to me and your house coming from Duncan.
Right, yeah.
Right, and as soon as you turn, it's like bam.
That's what I made said.
Yeah.
I'm usually turning right or I go the other way, but uh, yeah, I know there is, there has been one that's there that kind of pops up and we've, we've contacted the state um numerous times. I always encourage people, if someone calls the village with it, with an issue like that, I will call, there's a one eight hundred pothole number to report the pothole, but I encourage them to report it as well, because, you know, the squeaky wheel grease, but I always say, yeah, well, I'll call too, since you, you know, let me know.
I was gonna go to Lowe's and get some freaking auto patch and just fill this shit in myself.
Well, the problem, if you, if that, the coat patch is gonna pop back out, plus the state will never come and do it.
I know.
That's right.
And the other question I had um is, is from Marsha, why is her name Saint Peter from RIT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My son has a um RIT paper for him to have um an account that doesn't kick you out after forty minutes.
Ah.
So I'm Peter today. And if I turn off my video, you can see a picture of him.
I'm just, I gotta go, oh, you can see it over gray inside for.
Yeah, that's him.
Don, can I, uh Joe just texted me a question. Can I go back to the um, just a question about the, uh what the property is worth, those, um what we were just talking about, you said to hire somebody to do an assessment of what the property would be worth, those, um from the wells? She wanted to know if we can look at um what Smith assessed it as, so that, is that possible?
Yeah, that's, that's what I, that's what I looked at, the two thousand and thirteen report on the five wellhouses. Uh there's that, I contacted that assessor to do an update because obviously that was before the plan twenty fourteen and a lot of the changes in recent history of, of property values and changes down there. Uh then I also contacted the gentleman that did a Railroad Street for us and then another company that does, that did, that does commercial real estate, so there's three of them requesting quotes from.
Anything else anybody has at the moment?
I'll put in the minutes that Jake's, that Jerry's gonna go fill in the pothole, right? Okay?
I'll flag the traffic.
Okay, perfect.
The pothole might snow soon and the snow might fill it in, huh?
Yeah. Get some orange shirts for ya.
You can damp it down, Heather.
Boy, that wouldn't go very well. I'm just gonna get a flat tire.
Y'all, at the moment, have anything for us? If not, uh I would like to um ask for an executive session for the purpose of discussing the possible appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of two particular people.
And with that, I will say goodbye. See y'all later.
Thank you, Marsha.
Bye.